Within fourteen days after the filing of the petition, okay, so that's A, that's not us. B, in the case of a city of a third, fourth, or fifth class, which we are, a town or a metro township, at the next regular scheduled meeting of the municipal legislative body, that is, at least fourteen days after the date the petition was filed.
Correct. So, the petition shall be considered-
The petition shall be considered to have been accepted for further consideration under this part if a municipal legislative body fails to act to deny or accept the petition under Section 1A.
Which is the fourteen days we're talking about. So, this is what I have from Lincoln City Council. And so it's showing we, from when it's submitted, if we don't act on it within fourteen days, we've automatically accepted it. Did you get that out of that?
It seems contradictory to me, but the emphasis was on you can't do anything today, where it was just filed today, you have to wait until after fourteen days. But if you're scheduling your special meeting, the earliest, I mean, if the twenty-fifth is a holiday and we're holding it on the twenty-sixth, to me, you're acting within that fourteen day period.
So, we're within it?
What I'm trying not to get to is where we've just done nothing and now also-
And it is accepted.
And now we're in trouble.
Well, I mean-
I get you, I mean, we don't want to do that.
Well, there's, we've already had the other-
That's acceptance of the petition, not of the annexation.
That's correct.
So, if you end up accepting it anyway, it doesn't matter, but-
Except for the way we got there. Looks bad for-
But I think fourteen days from today is the twenty-fifth, it's at the legal holiday and we have the here, the special meeting on the twenty-sixth, that's as soon as we could have done otherwise.
Okay. And so am I reading that wrong? Is it, they're just saying within fourteen days, or you've accepted it?
I think they're contradictory.
The petition. Well, and from your body, that is at least fourteen days after the date the petition was filed. If it was filed today, then we can't do anything, it looks out fourteen days after.
No, I think that says exactly the opposite. If you don't act, then you've accepted it within fourteen days.
As above, the petition shall be considered to have been accepted for further consideration under this part if a municipal legislative body fails to act to deny or accept the petition. Under, so, anything above that, though, there's nothing that's, I'm not seeing fourteen days anywhere above it. I'm only seeing fourteen days between A and B here.
Right, so it's saying right there in B, that we, if we fail to act on it, it's considered accepted.
Well-
So, we could get, well, I mean, I don't think it's a big deal, but I think they're gonna probably close.
So, this is, you made a phone call and talked to at least one person that believes it is definitely after fourteen days, correct? As another municipality. So, we have one municipality we checked with today that thinks it is after fourteen days, right? I mean, this is important stuff.
Well, see that calendar right underneath that document?
Uh-huh.
So, it shows you when it was submitted.
Today's maybe the eighth. Yeah, it's a seven, it's the twenty-fifth.
Well, just that, that first one is when it's accepted, so it's just a, it's just a random calendar.
Okay.
So, you have fourteen days deadline, doesn't that say deadline for city or council to accept or deny?
Deadline to city or council to accept the petition, unfortunately, I didn't just submit it. So, this says, you know, the thirty-first, which would have been, I guess, before the first, then you got here.
Yeah, you've got your fourteen days, so there's your deadline.
Your city council has failed to act, petition been accepted. Well, and it's contradictory, it just is.
Yeah. Well, I, the way I read that, I don't think it is. I think it's saying exactly that, but that's why I brought it back up.
Is it worth another phone calls, is it worth another phone calls, is it to make sure?
Why don't you think it's contradictory?
I don't think it's contradictory, I think it's telling you if you don't act within fourteen days, you've accepted the petition.
It was just a 20-day calendar.
Right, but at the same time, it says you can't act until after fourteen days.
Where does it say you can't act? It says if you don't act, on B?
Cities and towns must act at the first regular meeting, that is, at least fourteen days after the submittal.
What line was that, Lynn?
She's reading, well.
What's highlighted.
Okay.
Right.
So, we're not, we're not A, we're B?
No, but you're I, it's under this heading. So, it's saying under I, you will accept it if it hasn't been acted upon in fourteen days.
Accepted for further-
Because I follow-
Does it say accepted or accepted for further consideration?
Right. If you fail to act on it, it's considered accepted.
Accepted for further consideration.
No, petition is considered accepted.
I'm trying to dissect words here.
Yeah. So, I read that different.
Okay, so it's suggesting that the-
Are we acting upon it by setting a special meeting to consider acceptance?
I don't think you are. But I'm just, if we're at fourteen days, I think that there might be a viewpoint, because I think you've already accepted it if we wait to fourteen days.
You mean, and so that the special meeting isn't necessary?
Correct. By failing to act, we've accepted it.
Right, but I still-
That's all we're wanting a special meeting for, right? To accept it?
That's what we were.
To accept or deny it.
I don't think I have a meeting, I don't think I'm-
Right, accept or deny.
If you're gonna accept it, then you don't really need to have a meeting.
Well, we don't know, they're not all here, so.
Exactly.
Let's keep it, let's keep the meeting as is, and that's as soon as we can have it, it's fifteen days to the holiday and, and either we'll have accepted it by legal terms, or we'll accept or reject it on our term, and then that could be a hiccup, so hopefully, now and then, we can understand.
Yeah. Sorry, I just, sometimes I get lost in some of that stuff.
Well, you can look at it different ways, and that's, there's, a little contradictory, I can see how it would be, but then-
I was trying to get along with David Church tomorrow and give a clarification. I called his office today, he wasn't in.
Yeah, he'll be able to clarify.
Yeah, for sure. Thank you.
Now, if for some reason we don't need to have a meeting or sooner than that, then I'll make the rather call all the council if we, if David tells us something different. Any other discussion on that?
Um, just one more thing, so, um, the recorder has to, what does she have to do that? What do you have to do that? You have to, what is it, Ryan, what am I after?
Verify the-
Verify.
Yeah, she has to verify the signature.
She has to verify the signature?
In this case, there's one, so.
Okay, so she, but you got that? That's all, the petition is verified at this point?
I have not verified it.
But theoretically, it is only because it's on the signature, but you haven't done whatever mechanical situation it is to certify.
So, is that just done by going to the county office and seeing what they have on file for his signature?
I don't know that far, I just read that in the law that you have to-
Called him on the phone, did you sign this petition?
Yeah, how do you, so how do you certify for that? Brett, Brett take him on, no, he's done it enough, but-
Yeah, I would have, I'd have to ask Brett, and Mary did it before on the other petitions we did that had a lot of signatures. I think it was verifying that the sign, finding, finding the signature, who it was, and then that they really did own property, or that they really were, you know, not so much they were who they said they were, but that signature matched property within the annexation boundary made sense.
Well, yeah, now, looking at the twenty-year plan, making sure it's in the twenty-year expansion plan, which we've done.
Which it is.
Yeah, which we've done.
Oh, but I'm just, the verifying signatures, is that if I sign it, does Ryan Taylor, do I actually own property in the annexation boundary? Or did I just sign an annexation petition where I don't live? And in this case, it should be fairly straightforward since it's one guy.
And he owns more than fifty percent of the properties, he can bring the other two properties in, so thereby, still one guy.
So, we're all, there's only the one signature to verify, and so we just need to double-check his name, and I, I goes for to call him and say, did you sign this? I thought he was gonna be here tonight, so we could ask, but I guess not.
Any other questions on that at all?
No.
We're going to have another eleven for this, gonna come, uh-
Too deep.
Well, once again, we're missing two people who have made some very vocal comments with regards to this issue. We put it off for a year, further discussion on compensation for water, utility personnel, including, um, I have not wanted to continue a lot of things, but I tell you, there's some people that would probably like to comment on it, uh, as suggestions from you guys.
Yeah. Did, you got the proposal, Ryan?
For water compensation comparisons?
Yes, I do know about.
Okay, you need also just bring your information if you're, if it's on, this is what Sherry has compiled on what our people have been reading in the last year. That's very detailed.
So, this is, this is Daniel only?
Yes, Daniel and Stormhaven.
Er, er, er.
Yes, it is, and it's very detailed, but each check, it was in the quarter of July through December of last year, and January through June of this year, on each one, so, with that, with the hours, that's very important to do, and the hours on there.
And so, if I remember right, Kim's recommendation was that we move Gary to twenty and left everybody else?
That's what he said.
That's what I recall him saying in the last meeting.
That is his opinion on it, and that is, and I have heard some other figures from himself, I've heard some other figures, higher and lower, and I, you know, those are appropriate figures as far as that goes, and I, you know, we can just, I mean, if everyone feels comfortable, we've talked about it enough, we can certainly take care of it this evening. Kim's point was that he would be able to just manage and have, you know, subcontractors, someone come in and really do the actual hand shovel work, so he, you know, he personally wasn't gonna do that, so he felt comfortable with, you know, the way things were going, and I know some people are, do a few more things than him, and so.
So, we don't have a total page for each person, do we?
There should be at the end of each particular report, but at the end of the-
Or behind each one?
Behind each, yeah. And I can have done with the total page, check the total hours on there.
You know, I'm embarrassed to even read them, I don't even want to look how low those are. I'm not embarrassed, it's just-
There's not many hours on this one.
Yeah, there's just, I mean, these guys are certainly doing us a great job, and, and, everybody, not just these guys, but-
So, Kim felt that just Gary needed to be bumped up a bit? Any other stake, is that what?
Helswood.
Yeah, it's not, it's not Kim.
I know John had, he's the one that put it on the agenda.
Backland, yep.
Yeah.
He was. I mean, he hit a bar.
Both of the ball.
Yeah. I know you're gonna hate me, but motion to continue.
I'm fifty-fifty on that, so. Okay, Chuck, taking motion, a motion to continue, do we have a second?
Oh, second.
Do we have a motion to continue, a person, a second, all in favor? I, I, any opposed? We're getting closer, I can feel it.
Do you want to have any questions on-
Let's hear mine.
On mine?
Yes.
So.
Of course we do, I forgot, Ryan, I'm feeling bad now.
Oh, you're good, continue. It's, uh-
It's obvious we're not making a decision tonight.
Well, you're not making a decision tonight, so I don't know that you need it, I can, I can wait, I just-
No.
I'm also stalling, because I've gotta text into Dave Church to see if I can answer your annexation petition, annexation question before the meeting, and it's okay, so. But, if I don't drag the meeting out a little bit longer, he doesn't have a chance to answer.
So, we continue the proposal with nothing to be involved?
Yeah, here's our discussion. So, I just, the mayor had asked me to prepare, so he talked some months ago, that Effie had started to hire licensed, at least one licensed water operator, and we discussed sending other, our other engineers to classes, to, you know, classes and eventually pass the test. Right now, we've got the one, and he's not that busy yet, so, until he gets busier, I don't think we'll be investing in anymore. But we have one, and if he gets busy, we'll invest in more. And so, we've gone around to other towns and asked other folks, you know, that don't have licensed operators, smaller systems than us, whether or not those are out there. One town with twenty connections and another guy that has sixteen. My recommendation to him was make two of them wholesale connections, and then you're not a public water system. Anyway, so, we're offering to act as the cities or towns' water operator, licensed water operator, and then as part of that, we've offered to do the water sampling. And so, partnering with Chemtech Ford, they've got a great program where they basically send you, they'll go to the Division of Water Rights, their water rates, Division of Drinking Water, and they look up what samples you need, and when they need them, right? And once a month, they send you this box, or they'll send us this box, we'll go fill up the water and take them back, and then Chemtech will make sure, guarantee that the results get reported in the drinking water directly. Which beats the heck out of anything else I've been able to find. And as far as, I looked at guaranteeing results and turning those in myself, and looked at the hours that it took to do it, and Chemtech charges a little bit more than the state lab on some tests, and it varies. Sometimes, like, the back tees are almost double, meaning twenty dollars instead of ten.
Fifteen.
Fifteen, sorry.
From the state.
So, fifty percent then. Other tests are about the same, and then the other thing, they can do a lot more tests, the state labs sends a lot, a lot of stuff out, Chemtech can do a lot more, not all of it, but, I looked at it as, if they're gonna guarantee the results get to the state and I don't have to get called, it's probably worth that more. So, that's who we, we're running our samples through. And so, what I was asked, I had this fancy presentation for other groups, it takes half an hour. Chip asked me to be brief, so I paraphrased, I got down to about a quarter page. I can try to be brief, I thought about deleting that third line, since it was a zero, but I figured I don't wanna go.
So, just say everything we need to know.
So, to be brief, the water operator, we're billing at a hundred twenty dollars an hour, and they're saying it takes them about a minimum of three hours for a water, you know, per water system. And part of that is, if he's on the hook for, it says license for being responsible if the water system's, you know, working, he'd like to go up once a month and, you know, look at it, and look at the pumps, and see the chlorine, and, you know, if it has chlorine, or, you know, see the components and make sure that it's, you know, working like it should, so that he doesn't get a phone call in the middle of the night that says, boy, did you certify a system that shouldn't have been certified? And then, I think for Daniel, the water sampler would be about three hours, again, to go out, probably twice a month, once to get all the samples, and then once, because there's always a follow-up or something. That, Gary goes out every two weeks, so basically, having him go out for an hour and a half every two weeks, fill up the bottles, and then we'll run him to the lab along with, you know, whatever else has to go to the lab that day.
Where's, where's the lab located?
It's down in Sandy.
Sandy.
Because I've got people work up here that live down there, that, I mean, I'm not too worried about getting the samples from our office down to Sandy. And so, I-
Worried about getting them cleaned?
No. Once, once they're in a sealed cooler, I'm okay.
I just had to ask.
I worry about my water sampler not having a cold, but, no, once they're sealed and in the cooler, I'm okay. I'm satisfied that I get there.
All right.
So, since we can continue, and you will give a sheet to Lynn, and so that can be our guide packets next month, and then basically go over this again.
So, the net result, just to have a licensed water operator and to do the sampling that's required, we were looking at, you know, sixty-five hundred dollars a year.
Sure is enough.
So, I have, that's five forty per month, sometimes twelve is-
And that's with an operator?
That's with the operator. If you wanted just the sampling, it would be, you know, two hundred dollars a month, so, twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five hundred a year.
And what was the one with the zero that we, they?
So, it was the engineer with PE that I left on there, but I said doesn't need any time. So, month to month, I don't think you need an engineer, but what I commented to Chip is sometime, drinking water comes out, and they say, you know, our engineers are coming up to evaluate your system, you probably wanna send your engineer out with them to make sure they don't get carried away, like we did with Stormhaven last week.
Didn't get carried away?
No, we stopped them from getting carried away.
Oh, okay, all right.
The drinking water sent a guy up and had a lot of questions.
He didn't, he didn't make it up?
He did make it up, but Mike and I met him, and we tried to bring him back to reality as quickly as possible.
I know.
The jury's still out on whether or not it worked, but we gave it, we gave it a really good shot right then and there before it got out of hand.
Okay, good job.
So, anyway, just for, I think you were looking for, just for rates to compare what you're paying Kim, Gary, and the other groups, and whether or not this would be a better deal, which it's not, but to see what your market might be.
Well, you know, I think things are progressing that, in those directions, so it's certainly not a waste of time nor a waste of thought talking about it, so.
Well, but as far as budgeting, if you were to hire a consultant, because I suspect, at least every time I've ever gone out, if you look at the competition, we're usually all really close to the same services, because, well, it's kinda how the entry market works. So, if you were to contract with me or anybody else, this is probably about what you pay.
Okay. And that was what I had asked, and I, I think there's a lot of merit to, a lot of this probably merit to have, so thank you.
You bet.
Can you email that to me?
You bet.
Any question, any more question for Ryan from the council? Okay.
What level is that, Ryan?
So, the guy we have right now is a level four.
He's level four, okay.
Um, once he retires, we'll probably replace him with ones and twos, but there's really no reason, any of the systems, we're talking about doing this for need more than one or two.
Right, but you do get points off for having over, over a two, right?
Yes. So, right now, he's a four.
Okay.
We do not have our water personnel, but Daniel Municipal Water Issues is necessary. I did talk to Kim this morning, there were none that he thought, or there were none that he really brought up or had any issues. I don't know if anyone else has any issues they'd like to bring up, but, you know, none from our water department.
Okay. I just had, on that new water line, Ryan, they're around two four inches across, is that correct?
That's correct.
Wait, I find that weird, that they just think more than eight and then split it. Is that weird to you?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what I showed, they wanted the two fours, so I said, okay. So, one of them goes to the meter, and there's a service connection and on a separate four-inch line, so.
That little fire line, right?
Yeah. And then, just down the road a little bit further, they have an eight-inch fire line for the fire hydrants. So, there's really, there's a fire line to the building and then a fire line to the fire hydrants, separate.
Are you inspecting out there, who's inspecting?
We are inspecting.
Reddick?
Yes.
I just had, I just was questioning the thrust block a little bit, but if he's inspecting it?
Which one?
They've left them open behind the hydrants?
Yeah.
It doesn't look like there's enough mass, I don't think, but if you're inspecting, I'm sure it's up to your standards, so.
So, the only one we missed is the plug on the tank pump, because they backfilled that one for safety reasons, which I support. I didn't get to see that one, but, one, the valve should be shut, so there shouldn't be a lot of pressing against that cap, and two, when we pressure test it, we'll figure out real quick if it's good or not.
Yeah, we have inspector out there, we're okay, I was just, I just looked at it and thought, man, that's a lot of pressure to put into that line, but, okay.
I will say, our soil tends to hold up a lot better than those thrust blocks are designed for, so, a lot of times, you can kinda cheat them and still be okay, so, but I'll bring that up to our inspector to double-check them all.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else on Daniel Municipal? If not, thirteen, Stormhaven Water Matters is needed, same with their, I don't know, Ryan, if you have anything, any more or less to add? I don't have anything to add as far as, I haven't heard any catastrophes or anything going on up there in the last week. I think there's been a little bit of, do you think it's going on, but just typical maintenance stuff?
Yeah, I understand we have one customer that's problematic, but, uh-
And I understand that, too, there's, there's one that, is a bill, water consumer issue, that's trying to get him up down. One water bill.
On the water bill? Too much?
Through, or? Uh, too much through, didn't know, had a leak, could have had, maybe had a leak, and then they found it, and so it's under control now, but, yeah.
It was a leak, though.
Well, no, no, I don't know that it was or wasn't a leak, they just, I think it might not have been a leak, but they thought it was a leak, but it wasn't a leak.
So, the one I understand is there's a cross pre-hydrant that's not metered, that one, I guess there was, allegedly, there was an agreement with the former owner that he could use that to water some of his trees sometimes, and he's taken that to mean he can run a hose wide open twenty-four seven? And I think Kim took the approach that you may or may not have had an agreement, but it wasn't with me.
There you go.
So, we put a meter on it and tried to charge him, and he's not real happy with that, if I have any.
I'm sure we'll see that again.
He might have found some other problem.
So, that apparent leak that came and went, that we could never find, that might very well have been in.
That might have been in.
She could always take the hell out of it.
Might have been in. Well, I mean, we hear that all the time, I've been doing that forever, I know, but-
Well, you can't do it no more.
I need to also get with you and get the, I still haven't received the Stormhaven-
Okay.
Thing, and I need to, I need you to send me a letter, and I need to get you to help me save it-
Okay.
On the pad, so, because for some reason where I'm at, it's a hot stain.
We'll have to, we'll work on that.
Okay.
And I just heard back from, Craig Smith just got back to me, he said he does, he does not think you have to wait.
Fourteen days?
Right. So, whatever that's worth.
Who said this, Craig Smith?
Craig Smith and Dave Hartlton.
So, Hartlton's our attorney, or, so his firm is our attorney firm, so hopefully, he might, we might have a confidence, so.
I suppose we could roll it on there.
So, what does that mean exactly? It's like, it just means that we can just move the date up until any time you want?
So, Craig says there's three steps, the council accepts or rejects the petition, clerk or recorder has to certify the petition, then they set a hearing date and advertising may begin.
Yeah, well, we knew all those steps.
And so, I replied and said, so, I understand, do they need to wait the fourteen days to accept or reject the petition? And the response was, we don't think so. So. And I don't think, the last time we did this on those two annexations, I don't think we did, but like I said, the law's changed, I know at least twice, so, anyway, just, just another opinion to throw into the mix.
So, did you read that, I handed it to that one, Lynn called it, Lynn gave me?
No, I haven't read that yet, that was-
Take your time, Ryan. Do you have an opinion yet?
We'll go over some mundane things and let you think about, because we haven't closed a meeting yet, so we may very well be able to come back to that.
Okay.
Um, so, fourteen would be approval minutes for May second's meeting, did anyone have a chance to look at that? And/or any corrections, or, uh, is it not June second, we want May second?
That's not even-
Oh, May's, okay.
We were waiting for Eric's changes.
And so, the change that I thought was significant was on page seven, do you have a copy of that one?
Thank you.
Or I can just give you this one?
No, I've got it, page seven.
Yeah, page seven, and it was halfway down, council members inquired if the issue had been discussed at planning meeting. Planning staff wants to know why, it's not the planning staff, it was the planning commission. Me and Ryan will never ask.
Well, that's a good thing or not?
Thanks for the warning. And then, uh, the next one's on page ten, and we was talking about the door-to-door. And at the bottom of that, one, two, three, well, second paragraph, third paragraph up from the bottom, as mandated by the state, I think we need to omit that. The door-to-door sales code within all cities is the same, as mandated by the state, it wasn't mandated by the state, we just adopted it, so we didn't get sued.
So, just delete those five words?
Yes, as mandated by the state, because we just did that so we didn't get sued.
So, do those salesmen that squirt the juice in their mouth and can clean anything, do they need a permit or not?
Yes.
So, if they're in our town, and they're knocking on our door, they should have a permit, either on them, or their boss, or somebody?
Yes, and they should have came, we had one person apply, and then they never showed up and get the permit, correct?
Correct. I saw three in town two or three weeks ago on the corner of about three thousand, and Daniel drove in, held other bags, doing it, and I didn't stop, I mean, but I wondered if that law was still in effect, or is that colder?
And so, what we did, we went and looked at other municipalities, and then drafted one that we had ready to go, because we, we had somebody that was pretty intent on it, was, and so me and Ryan got together, and we got that all, and then they never came, got the permit, so.
For door-to-door sales, or whatever?
Yeah, for door-to-door sales, because we have the ordinance, we just didn't have the form.
For the applicant.
Right.
Yeah, so, we created a form and created a process, and I emailed her back and said, okay, sorry for the delay, here's, you know, I now have a form and a process, please apply, and after calling every day for two weeks, do you have a process? How do I get one, how do I get one? Never responded, so. But we have one.
Yeah.
Some of them were pretty intense. Some of the other municipalities, they were intense little.
Regulations?
Yeah, yeah, it was intimidating actually to think of it.
So it said we get to choose a sign. Eric told me I couldn't pick the one that was about gay big and looked like a bullseye. I wanted one on the front and back that you wore. But Eric said I couldn't do that.
That's why we work in pairs.
You're a bullmer.
What we're going to do is one of that, one of ours on the front. Who was it going to wear it?
So those were the only changes I had on the, on the May one.
Okay. I remember looking at it and except for those that looked good to me, council entertained a motion to approve minutes of May second, 2016.
So moved.
We have a motion?
Second.
And we have a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Minutes approved for May second. Okay, we also have the minutes for June second, which would be last month's meeting.
June sixth.
Excuse me. You're right, it is June sixth. I've been reading too much tonight.
You've been reading too much? The only thing I seen was at the start of that, we had Charleston board member, and he's actually a city councilman. At the very members of the public. And so we just had board member.
Okay.
Council member. So they're not look good. Because it does state that he isn't a council for the town.
I think I got that off of their website. They said the council board, that Charleston board members are.
I don't doubt that.
Because I had to find his name spell. I will change it to councilman.
That was the only change I had.
With those changes, I make a motion to accept the June sixth.
We have a motion to accept June six minutes. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second. All in, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Approval of June sixth, 2016 minutes. We'll turn the time over to Lynn, the corps' office warrant approvals, Polaris software bid approval announcements and things. And I'm anxious to hear about the new software.
Sure, you're just sitting here. The entry receipt.
So before you get started, so with what you printed us tonight, would it have helped or was it sixes as far as that, that printout you did?
They have the new software?
Would it, would it have been more helpful or would it have been sixes as far as just, just this report?
I don't know much how payroll is in the new system, but you can do payroll in the new system. You can do everything in this. All the stuff we're doing and all the different things, you can do it all.
So do we have the new system or are we just?
No, we've had the demonstration of it and it looked terrific.
You loved it. Both of you had the demonstration, you're okay?
And I talked to, I talked to Francis.
Going pretty happy about it.
Eager City used to be on their competitor, Cassell, and they have changed it for us.
There's a reason.
Okay, I'll fill the warrants and then we can go through the Polaris facts. Reimburse myself with the phone and some paper and paper. We did get the liability policy from the leak, 3723 for the town, and there are other amounts for the two water companies. Have one invoice from the Wasek way, we have those. Have the municipal clerks association, who's a $100. The first epic invoice listed there is the balance on the grant that Epic received from Department of Environmental Quality. And I thought we would have received the check by now. The gab that I submitted all the materials to said everything looks good. She was submitting it for payment, we just haven't received the check yet. The check will not be given to Epic until Daniel has received that, so that we don't have any monies out of pocket for that. And all of the other work that Epic has done for the month is listed there. They had an invoice for working on roads. The order billing from Blue Stakes was 5580, which is higher than the others have been the other quarters, but we had a lot of.
You get slammed.
Yeah.
You weren't doing a little best exam?
Yes, and hard hat. They scared our Maverick boys. They didn't have, there was no safety vest for hard hat on there. They're going to this guy down the road and then vesting hard hat. They start to scatter.
On the ULGT liability policy, was that any increase in last year by chance or is that the same?
It's close. It's, it was a slight increase. And then we've got Eric's Blue Stakes hours on there and we sprayed that he had purchased from the Steve Reeb company. Payroll will be reduced. Council members, two of them not here, so it will be like $100. Daniel Municipal, we've got the local power bill, $163.
Got a question on that.
That's going to go up next month. We ran the well a couple of times, so it's going, it's going to be the big one next month.
So before, yeah, so when you turned it off, we got the bill, and this is where the bill was before we turned it back on and did these tests, right?
Right.
Okay, so this is where we really would like to have it, but we know we're never going to get this.
Well, so last week I met with Heber Power and brought up the, let's talk about this, and their answer wasn't absolutely not. So I talked to Gary today. We're going to see if we can follow up and see if we can come to some more reasonable compromise.
If we can't, is there a possible option of batteries?
Lot of batteries, but yes, I mean, it can be done, but we're talking about a lot of batteries.
That's going to be a long way in front.
Yeah, you're trying to start a 50 horse motor, so you're looking at, you know. But if you're thinking of the batteries like some people put in their house to run their system, probably 10 times that number of batteries to start it and run it for 20 minutes.
Plus a converter, DC DC.
Okay, never mind.
It's a bad. Unless it'd be a lot of maintenance too.
Yeah, the generator is really the best one I've come up with, is instead of having a standby generator, apply, apply for it, we could probably get a grant to have a standby generator that was parked there instead of a connection for one. And then what you would do is test both of them currently. So you go fire up the generator and switch the pump station over to generator power. While you're running the generator, you need to run it under a load anyway, so you just fire up your well, let it run for an hour. It would cycle both of them really well and then you shut both of them off, and that would avoid the deep charge.
Which would pay for the generator, eventually.
Especially if you got the generator under a grant.
I like that.
It's a good, it's a good option.
I like that idea.
Will that load test the generator? That's not being a load test generator. Are you talking a small generator?
Well, as I said, it depends on how big the generator is. So if we size the generator just for that building, then yes, a 50 horse would pretty much max out. That would be the idea, is you get a generator that 50 horse would pretty much max out.
Okay.
So in that case, yes.
I was thinking more of a portable unit we could hit both with.
So if we just bought a 500 KW portable unit, then no, that 50 horse wouldn't really do a whole lot.
How many KW would it be? Just curious. I don't know electricity at all, but I know Ks are K, maybe 15,000, 10,000?
Two horsepower, right, two horsepower per kilowatt, but I've always confused on which ones they're.
I didn't think that did.
Is it 100 kilowatt or 25 kilowatt?
What's that?
A 50 horse motor. Is it a 100 kilowatt motor or 25 kilowatt?
I bet it's 100.
I'm going, I'll go with 100. If I'm wrong and it's 25, it'll be cheaper.
Surprisingly, not much.
And Mike, Mike offered that too. He says, you know, with the basin in upside down out there, there's a lot of equipment for sale. I have prime time to look at.
Yeah.
That, you know, really, if we're doing, if we're doing two tests a month and it costs that much for the test, that's not necessarily a bad idea.
Yeah.
Especially if you can pick one up for five to $7,000.
If it's a tracking device, so we know where it is, all we need it.
Yeah, I was going to say park it up there and dig the tires off.
Okay.
So mad at me.
And maybe a tracking device anyway?
Of course, if it's not yours, you don't care if I have tires on.
But if you're stealing it, you want it to work when you get it where you're going.
I'd rather borrow it.
Have to use a backhoe to lift it.
Yeah, we might want to look into seeing, because there's a lot of options going on.
So we're going to wait till after your meeting and then we can kind of have a little direction after, after he talks to you.
Yeah, and so we can talk, Heber Power came and met with me about the solar permits and the process they would like us to follow. And so I said that would be great. You know, we'd really like to cooperate. Do you want to cooperate?
Is it different from what we've been doing?
Yes.
Really?
They just drive by.
Are they actually going to inspect them?
No.
Oh.
They just drive by and collect what? What is their fee they normally collect?
About an order of magnitude more than ours. Those are a couple thousand dollars usually.
Yeah, and they just drive by. They don't even stop, see.
That's what Tom Knowles said.
Yeah.
But our inspector has caught a couple of issues we've had at town.
Yeah.
Save some folks some money.
Possibly a burn.
Or other things?
Yeah. So they, did they outline, they have a?
Yeah, they have an outline. Basically, they want us to send all the permits to them. And they've got training classes and stuff that they want all the solar providers and all the homeowners to go through. And after they go through all that, they'll send it, send the permit to the proper jurisdiction and we can go through our process and then issue a permit. But they'd like us to send all the solar permits to them and then they'll send them to us when they're ready. Instead of what we've been doing, is we've been processing them, we've been saying, hey, this is the address, there's a solar permit, are you aware of it? As soon as they acknowledge they're aware of it, you should permit, because I just want them to know that it's happening. And so we said we'd be happy to work with you, but we'd be happy to work with us.
You got my application yet?
Probably. I don't think so.
Anything else on the budget? Or excuse me, the warrants.
So we got down to the Epic invoice there and then the ULGT CT. Local government's trust GT is the insurance on the well and the pump house and so forth at Daniel Municipal. And then they added the Stormhaven facilities. Then we know there's not one. Each water company only had one test this month, the BATT. And you can see your table there.
Any other questions with council regarding to the warrants?
No.
Motion to accept? Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second to approve. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Warrants approved. So I'll turn the time over to you. Sherry or whoever.
On the Polaris, you've got a sheet there called Polaris methods. This is the bid document basically that they forwarded to us after they came out and went over sort of what we have. Sherry sent them our, the QuickBooks files, just the basic. And their bid is for $2,600 to convert everything from QuickBooks into their software and then $500 quarterly.
Is that per machine, is that?
No, he said they would tie in both Kathy's and Sherry's laptop. I would be doing all of the data entry that I don't do now, and to get the water companies set up, I would personally like to enter all of that information in, names, addresses, everything. And then I can hand over to the water secretary.
How about backup on this? I'm sure it's covered in here somewhere in here.
We, this would, I mean, our entire, my entire computer is, goes into the Dropbox nightly, so it is backed up. They have their own.
Every time you turn it on, doesn't it?
Yeah.
It sucks. It's like forever to things.
Oh, it doesn't, mine doesn't. It just says 35 files synced.
Updated, yeah.
Go on.
It's a pain when you're trying to do something.
But Polaris also does their own backups.
If they're in that connection.
They have.
It's only two years old.
They have a server that we can either have at their office or it would be on the town's computer. I think it would be easier if we had it. My one question to them was, would it work faster down in Utah County? Because I have seven, whatever the units are supposed to. It can be real slow. You said that doesn't make any difference.
Do it slow anyway?
Yeah, whatever I do, I do, no matter where the server is. For the water accounts, when it prepares a statement, it itemizes everything. It has, what the previous bill was, the payment received. The overage amount paid, it figures interest if there was a balance left. And they said they work with the ACH program at Zions where you can make online payments. We said he didn't know if the bank would charge for that or not. The individuals set up their account at Zions to do that. Sherry asked our contact at Zions if there's a fee and she said no.
And I, I think ACHs are not at this point charged.
Should be able to do that.
They would go through that program. The program would take it wherever the bank is and where they are.
As far as the customers, would it be hard for the residents to set up, is that something, I mean, we have a kind of an older population, is that something? You think that we would, that a lot of residents would use this AHC method?
Well, the younger population, you know, some just like.
They always don't do online payments.
And I'm barely right in the middle there, so I kind of do and I kind of don't.
Bridger, Bridger, do it.
Sign up tomorrow.
There you go.
There's a certain, we'll do it every time. Then there's others who won't do it. I'm kind of in the middle.
They said they, you see your bill when you're doing it online, but Daniel would have to discontinue their service if they remember decide they're not doing it anymore. We do have to get it off there, but it sounded like it had options that we don't have right now.
And it'll put the meter readings on the bill.
Yes.
So we're going to put you on the spot. What was your favorite of this? What was, what was the key factor? What was really, oh, keys, plural, because I know there's more than one.
I mean, they didn't demonstrate everything. They just kind of wanted to see what we were interested in, the highlights. I think the water account was a big thing because we've had, people say they want more information on their bill and they're doing online payments. It sounds like they can do just about anything our people would like.
Sherry, and for you?
It'll do transparency uploads without all the stuff I'd have to do to do that. Because I, it goes to a template, you have to code it, you have to send it. It already has.
It generates automatic reports that the QuickBooks does.
Well, I know Lynn for just our budget planning, that would help. For yours, you're, you're just using it positive.
It seems like we're doing payroll someplace, we have water someplace, you're doing business, it's business licensing, they'll do all in one.
Yeah, so it'll pay for itself.
It lets you know when a license is due for renewal, it gives you your letter to go to them, everything but probably type up the license itself, but.
Does it have, is there a, is this free up a portion for you if you have issues included in this fee? Is there a helper, manager?
It's, it's all, you can call them with any questions anytime.
There's, there's support, there's.
Support is, that's what your $500 supporter is for.
Yeah.
This shows you all the services that they offer. Somebody would use, somebody would not. The long-term debt, they work with the auditors, they've worked. Many towns have used Gilbert and Stewart, they're familiar with the reports. Everything is so automatic. Once the data is into the software, it goes everywhere it needs to be.
Yeah, I wouldn't do journal entries anymore. I mean, does it keep things, does it?
Just eliminates a lot of work that we seem to spend time on, putting figures in different places and it incorporates it all in one place.
So frustrating everybody that's working for them.
Everything's right, there are figurative. There, there's no charge. They don't have periodic new version and update. If they find an easier way to do something, a better way, they automatically update everybody and it's just.
And they kind of hit a figure tab for bigger guys who built a state or for.
I remember we were one of the few that weren't using this already.
Well, I don't know about a few. I mean, I can't remember how many.
Well, most everybody around here as far as being.
Yeah, in Mossach County for sure. The system was developed from municipal government. By CPA, who worked with a lot of other programs and a lot of governments, and they just didn't mesh as well as they could. So he developed his own software that just. mesh as well as they could, so we developed this, his own software that just taters to what the town needs. Yes.
Maybe not. He's figured out how government works.
I'd like to know that. I wasn't really figuring that out.
I know we've talked about this for a few months, and I, I, I felt good from just the time we've, I started searching into it, and I've been very positive every time you've looked at it, and I know, Sherry has, I'd kind of like to see us make the switch, and it's gonna take a little while to make that switch, won't it?
Right, and he, they would train on every day of training. They would train both Sherry and I either up here or down there, and it doesn't have to be at the same time. They're willing to work with your schedules. They would not send us an invoice until they've done all the conversion and were trained.
Yeah, I think Kathy would like.
We need a motion that we move on with this.
We would be, because it's over the limit.
I need a motion that we move ahead forward on this Polaris.
We have a motion to move forward on the Polaris software system for the town. Do we have a second?
Yeah, I'm gonna second that.
Great. Now we have a second. Any last discussion?
Has Chris looked at this?
Yeah.
Do we want to bounce it off him?
To see if he's familiar with it?
Or just, it was surprising.
Just as he's working on it, if it's, wouldn't hurt to bounce it off him.
It would probably take away some of his duties that he does tying into the water systems. They, they could have Polaris, I don't know if directly installed on Kim's laptop, wherever they get the water readings, it, you know, it just ties in and would.
Yeah.
Put that information.
What was it, meter maintenance?
Yeah, meter maintenance.
Meter maintenance, who actually hold the meetings in the program, stuff.
You love it.
I don't know. That's another thing. Is it compatible with our reader?
Well, they're the meter maintenance readers.
Well, we just paid to upgrade that as well, so yeah, we shouldn't be able to simplify that process.
Try, we had to upgrade, you know?
Yeah, but since we're in that year, they should, that service that we're providing should help us on that end convert the master meter into this reading directly, probably avoid a lot of steps that Chris has already written.
Yeah, I think so, because I, I mean, I used to work for the town.
Well, in this case, I think if they bring Chris to this side, or before we've been bringing us to Chris's side up to this point, maybe this particular program will just bring Chris to this side if that might work.
I think we should approve, but I think we'll bounce it, just give him a heads up.
Oh, oh, absolutely, yeah. Yeah, not just, I'll say I'm surprised you don't have it, but just let him know we've, we've looked at this and it looked like it was gonna work really well for the town and.
That's my discretion.
Okay, all right. Good. That makes total sense, and I would agree 100%.
Call for the move.
So, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, we're getting Polaris, um, I'll make a note to, uh.
You guys got what you asked for now.
Yeah.
Oh, and it did say one bank account.
Oh, that's right. That was another thing.
What?
We have, how many bank accounts?
Oh, six, seven bank accounts or whatever.
Everybody.
One bank account, it's all, it'll put everything where it needs to be, different funds. We don't need all of that.
You have one account and a number of funds, and they said that's hard for some towns and councils to get used to, but you allocate it where it's supposed to.
You got your town and you got your funds that are just.
Yeah, they just code it to the right places.
Epic doesn't have to get three different checks.
Kathy doesn't have to get three different checks.
Yeah, you know, it's just certain, different amounts.
But yet we code it to that place.
How will that tie into our impact fee?
This program should be able to handle impact fees.
It does, it has a separate.
We're not the first one to need it.
Is that a fund? Is that a separate fund?
Yes.
Yeah, but it would put it in the right, it has a place for different funds, and it just coded to the right.
I mean, you, you fill out the box of, you know, I'd ask you all the questions. What is, where does this money go? What is it for? And then it puts it in the correct place in your accounting.
Yeah, because we have to track where it's from and use it within that area.
Oh, yeah, that's what they'll do.
When we take it out, so.
It just puts it in the different funds.
That is part of their calculus.
Okay, so it's part of that, okay.
It doesn't need to be a different bank account.
Yeah, so that's how this that I'm here, but I asked him about that.
And so, and how many funds can we have? Does it, is it limited?
There's no limit.
There's no limit?
No.
Okay, so if we get, I'm just thinking about all the different things that we've.
Our little town will, I mean, it could do more than we're allowed to do.
These people, the services other towns have, police, cemeteries.
Cemeteries.
Animal control. I mean, we have so few areas right now.
Yeah.
And water is our only utility. They're just, every utility.
Yeah, I just worry about tracking, getting that back out where it's going.
Oh, I think it'll track much better than we're tracking right now.
I think so too. It's so automatic.
Everyone, on everyone.
Okay.
And I will call Chris, and then, first of all, just tell him what's going on.
Yeah, I think if you use Stephen's sheet, you'll be able to look it up on the internet and see what's all about.
And the gal on Francis says anybody, everybody has a code that gets into it. It'll track who's been in it and all that.
I don't want to get in there. I just want to be able to tell you to get in there.
Well, that's fine. It tracks who's been in it, what they've done.
He said make a withdrawal.
Yeah.
He said make a withdrawal.
Yeah.
He said for them it, it helps to know who was in it, so people, some of their towns, some towns have some problems or something.
Yeah, I just want to be able to retrieve those, those funds that we can use on projects we're doing.
Okay, yeah.
Keep those separate, because we have to track that by protocol, so.
Yeah.
If that does that, that's awesome.
I'm sure it tracks better than we're tracking right now.
I don't know, we're pretty good.
Well, we're tracked, but your tracking will do well, I'm sure.
We're 100%, are we, right? Right on.
Yeah, I'm sure you've got your tracking.
With both tracks?
With both tracks.
End of discussion.
Yeah, I'm sure you're tracking that really well, but as far as you might have.
That's good.
End of discussion. The general attorney motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn, sorry.
Oh, yes, yes, thank you.
I, I came up with an opinion.
I thought of it twice, I thought of it twice before I went, so.
And I'm good not sharing.
I do want to care, I do care.
So I, I think we can act before the 14 days. Partially from the lawyer, so to be fair, I mean, I, I, that's legal, but the way I read it, it, there's 1A1 and 1A, or 1AI and 1II, if you're more specific, and if you go down to two, it, it helps kind of clarify, in my opinion.
Yes.
So the municipal legislative body, if the municipal legislative body accepts a petition under subsection 1AI or is considered to have accepted the petition under subsection 1AII. So the way I read 1A, I, and II are that you can either, that we can either, tonight's meeting, we could do, we can do something or we could not do something, and we're okay. At the August meeting, it's been more than 14 days, and so if we haven't done something, we by default accept it.
That was what I thought.
And so, that's my, that's my understanding of it, and then down to number two is, once we accept the petition, or 14 days goes by and we have a meeting and try not to talk